Move into the pledge.
Recording stopped.
I thought I said stop.
I thought you were going to say goodbye. The United States of America. United Republic of America. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas five, and always in the seat of Texas. One, two, three, under cloud, one, and indivisible.
All right, we'll have a roll call to establish the order. Councilmember Chris Richardson, president, councilmember Bob Hamburg, Senator, councilmember Lenea Bailey, here. Councilmember Chris Grummett, here. Member Tim Deborah Heinz, here. Okay. Our meeting. So we have a forum with four members here. You might notice that Mayor Rask was absent, and in his absence, I will be leading the meeting as Mayor Pro Tem. And before we go into public comment, I would like to issue the same message that Mayor Rasko issued at the last meeting, which is we need to address proper procedures in decorum during meetings. We'll refrain from name-calling and appropriate gestures and profanity. We also need to keep the discussion to a minimum in the audience, as that chatter, that noise interferes with the audio quality for those watching at home and makes the audio hard to use later when we have to reference meetings. And then also, not everybody in this room has full hearing, right? So it makes it very hard up here to hear each other whenever there is a lot of discussion in the audience, so let's keep that in mind. And then lastly, public comment is during designated points in the meeting. So we do need to refrain from interrupting and interjecting during council's portion of the meeting for speaking. And so thank you all for understanding or respecting those procedures. So we're going to start with in-person public comments first. Yeah. And do you mind getting that one? Sorry. You have a nice full house. Let's get to it, please. So Karen Smith is up first. If you didn't designate an item, you'll speak during this period. If you would like to speak during a different item, you can just say that instead.
Well, I didn't think I would be able to be here tonight, but I decided to make it a priority. So I'd like to read my letter that I had written when I thought I would be absent. So thank you, Deborah, and thank you, Jeff, for everything that you've done, your devotion to our community, and for the hard work of bringing such positive cooperation and so many important improvements to our community. Park improvements, new roads, and I'll dare say improved communications in the community are some of the more obvious positive changes I've seen happen in Wood Creek in the last few years. When we first came to Wood Creek 10 years ago, what I recall is a community stuck in attitudes of selfish gain and political strife. Now we're facing a critical choice in our community. It's an obvious comparison to the choices we will make on a national level. I believe we are at a critical point in our community, as in our nation. We must elect leaders, even in this community, who are thinking about the future of our planet, the quality of life for our young families, and the best use of resources to make our neighborhood safe and cooperative. As our world gets more complicated, it becomes even more important for small communities to take the highest care possible of its citizens of all ages, all races, all religions, and no matter their political persuasion. We have to have leaders who are committed to all the people they represent. I want to live in a community that is kind, considerate, and welcoming to all people, the kind of community we have now, the kind of community that you, Jeff and Deborah, and all of you on the council have worked so hard to create. Please vote more with your heart than just with your pocketbook. That's from me, Karen, and my husband, Marvin.
Thank you all, thank you.
You don't have to. Thank you for this portion of our council meeting. I'm just here to give my thanks and appreciation to those people sitting right here on the dais. Dais, is that plural? Diasis? Because having sat there long ago, maybe 19 years ago, I know that you have to read a lot, study a lot, prep a lot, and be very well-versed in the items that are going to be on the agenda. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate what you bring to our community, and I'm cheering you on.
We have Mr. Brent Polley.
Yes, thank you. I'm Brent Polley, I live at 26 Wood Creek Drive, and I want to congratulate Deborah on running your first meeting, and I hope it goes well. I'm going to echo what's already been said, and I want to thank every one of you guys, man, for serving on this council, because I've been in those chairs, and I can, I know, it's not easy. You know, it really isn't. We've been able to do some really, really good things, and I think this community ought to be proud of ourselves, and it'll be proud of all of you, you know? You guys are volunteers, that's what people forget. You know, this isn't a glamour position, you don't get paid a lot of money to do this, but volunteer your time, come down here and work. I came here today on a bike ride, and Deborah's up here working, you know? So that's what it takes, and that's what you guys have done. And I'm going to echo and say, I really, really appreciate what you've done. I think this community as a whole appreciates what you've done, because you've taken time from your family, from your life, from your job, and you've given that time to your community. So thank you for that. So I appreciate it, and keep your chin up, all right? It's tough times, it's election season, so it's going to get weird, but it'll be all the same. I mean, hopefully, get back to normal. I do want to speak to one agenda item, which is the agenda number three, road safety. I appreciate you guys working on that. We have a serious problem with traffic. It's increased in volume and in speed throughout this neighborhood. When we drive up here, you know, to come to City Hall today, when I did, there's people out walking there with their kids, they got baby strollers, got their pets, their grandkids, you know? We've got to keep the effort up to make it safer for people around here. And I think you're heading in the right direction. So keep it up, I support you 100%. If you need me, please don't call me, so thank you.
Mr. Don Stowe.
Yes, I'd like to hold most of my comment to item number four.
Okay.
Because that directly impacts me and my family. But I would also like to echo that I do appreciate all y'all do. I haven't been there very long, about three and a half, almost four years, and I've seen the city come to action when the ice storm hit and limbs were down everywhere, and I was thoroughly impressed. So y'all do a great job. Thank you for volunteering to be a part of this community at the level you're at, and we do appreciate all you do.
Mr. Joseph Smith.
All right. I got to put on my peepers though. I have to leave after this because of kids. Well, thank you, honorable Chris Riches. Honorable area, Chris, Deborah. Thank you all for giving positive statement, because I was here when there were the do-nothings up here. And I'll try to be nice enough to do that. Let's talk about the things hard-working people, as Brett mentioned, done. They protected the Brook Meadow large lot size where someone wanted to come in and break it up to micro lots and basically would have caused super overdevelopment in this area. So if you guys were worried about the water reserve, that guy would have hit us hard if they didn't go ahead and protect Brook Meadows. For those of you, I'm not there yet, though I am ancient. They did pass additional homestead exemption for 65-plus disabled folks, something a lot of people have talked about, again, the do-nothing, had done nothing, but they've actually done something. And, you know, to run a city, you need bond, and they were able to pass a bond with a $0.2 increase, which, when we saw the, all the road improvements that were talked about for years and years, you actually saw that accomplish, and still more is planning. And because they were able to actually do it, I can actually believe them when they have a plan versus a concept of a plan. And just as you all mentioned, they show their leadership when that ice storm Mara hit us, and they actively got out there and helped make the disaster less of a disaster. I've seen many signs, many events, and I see they're making an attempt to even expand the volunteer work to try to get more people from citizen to be part of our community, because more diversity, more voices, even those that I may pose, I want to hear them. And one of my things that I want was that to get us away from the HOA mentality, and we are starting to act like an actual city, which we should. They completed their comprehensive plan. They actually done the paperwork, you know? I've done grants and stuff. You know, it's nice to talk about grant, but you actually have to fill out forms, crush the number. They execute the POSAC grant and install the park improvement in local location. Yeah, there are things that can be done, but what I know is that when we had that thing for our kid, our kid loved it, and when we passed, when I passed there on the vice and whatnot, it's constantly being used. And as the weather get better, you'll see that getting more and more used, and it's great to have a location right there where it is. It's a, keeps safer than the kid. I've seen walk into the, our street, which, you know, without sidewalk, it is difficult to be safe. Anyway, this is the bad side, which I, I'm going to leave the app for right now. But I just want to point out that those who are poking hard, this working group. I've looked it up, in 2015, they had a report on this, on roads and whatnot. And the people there were Bill and Eric. And pretty soon after that, Gloria became mayor. And Deerfield was included in that plan, and I can be a witness that nothing was done. So I don't want to get back to those days again. And another thing I'd like to point out, yeah, it is candidate season, weird stuff is going on. You can tell people by responsibility, not, you know, by talk is cheap, but what is action? Well, yesterday, we had a legal woman vote who invited all the candidates. Who showed up? Who came up so that the people can hear their voices? I can tell you, three people didn't show up. And, and these other people did. So I applaud that, I applaud.
Mr. Fine, I'm so sorry, I forgot to set the timer, and I believe you have used three minutes at this point, and I will be better about using a timer.
No, no, I'll, I'll, I'll write it right now. Well, thank you very much.
Sorry, y'all, I didn't have that, I just wasn't, I will do better.
You're fine, Deborah.
Mr. Sharmil, just keep something thoughtful.
All right. Hello. I also wrote a letter, because I have two young toddlers at home, and I wasn't sure if I was going to make it, but here I am. So when my husband and our boys moved here in the summer of 2021, we were immediately welcomed by some of the most sincere, genuine, and friendly neighbors, friendless you could ask for, really. Their warmth and encouragement led me to more act, to become more active in the community, hosting free community events, volunteering for the city, and now entering my second year serving on the Wood Creek Tree Board. Staying informed about city affairs is important to me, especially as a member of the tree board, but also as a mom raising children here. I regularly watch recordings of city council and advisory board meetings, digging through past minutes and agendas to find answers and insights our community needs. I also keep up with our community's social pages on Facebook and Nextdoor, sharing and promoting free events that bring us together. While most of the online engagement is positive and supportive, there are occasional instances where a small group of residents seem to spread hate and misinformation. These individuals often target the same people repeatedly, and when confronted with facts, comments just seem to disappear. And then they just hold on without any consequence, right? So what's really disheartening is how they openly wish for those correcting their misinformation to cease and desist, rather than encouraging truth and transparency. So I wanted to show up today to show my support for certain members of the board, because in my time of being involved, I've observed something about one person in particular, the Mayor Pro Tem, Deborah Heinz. I've noticed that Deborah often becomes the target, because she is one of the few people who actively engages with the community online. She stays diligent about what's being said regarding our city. I've noticed that she consistently speaks up, keeping residents informed on city business and local events. I've noticed that she listens to the community. She keeps residents, or sorry, skip that. She speaks up, keeping residents informed of city business and local events. I've noticed that she listens to the community, drives initiatives forward, and ensures that actions are taken and things get done. I've noticed that she shows up, not just for these meetings, but for her neighbors, for almost every city event, from clearing roads after a huge storm to attending local gatherings at CYJ. And she doesn't do it alone, she's backed by the support of the majority of our city staff, city council, and many others in this community who share her appreciation and dedication. The current administration has consistently demonstrated their dedication to serving the people of Wood Creek, making it a better place for all of us to live. Their achievements in road improvements, sound fiscal management, active citizen engagement, and the effective disaster response reflect their commitment to progress in the well-being of our community. Under their leadership, Wood Creek is thriving. They remain the ideal choice to ensure that the continued growth and success of our city. I urge anyone, that time, yeah?
If you have, like, your last thing.
I have just one last little paragraph. I urge anyone who can step up and get involved, get involved where you can. The city is run by elected officials and an appointed body of volunteers. These individuals juggle their personal lives and other commitments all while, all while staying dedicated to the betterment of our city and its residents. There are many ways and levels to get involved, time where you can make a difference and take that step. It's time for the hate and division to end. This kind of negativity has no place in our community, plain and simple, it's just not the Wood Creek way.
And Mrs. Schucraft.
Hello, I'm Linda Schucraft, I live at 69 Wood Creek Drive. Oh, nice to see all y'all, y'all here. Thank you. The ladies and gentlemen who preceded me have articulated things so beautifully that I'm just going to thank everyone for their input and say ditto to the comments that have preceded me.
Wow. Mrs. Nikki Smith.
Hello, Nikki Smith. I just came out here to, to my support and appreciation for everyone here, for all you do. I know that you're all unpaid volunteers, just donating tons of your time and your energy, and I know that it can be kind of a thankless job in some ways. I hope it's feeling more thankful job today, but because you, you really do have to sacrifice a lot to donate this time, especially if you're younger and you have kids, because I know they are also a full-time job in addition to earning a living and doing this volunteer work. So I really appreciate all the extra you're doing. And I have had the chance over the years to see many turn up when there was a need, especially during that ice storm. We live right next door to where all the volunteer work was happening, bringing in the tree limbs and stuff, and I saw you guys there all day. So I really appreciate all that you did and know that you have our support and our gratitude for caring so much about this community. I know that a lot of people, everyone here does, everyone cares about this community. And some of us have different ideas about the best way to improve our community and to support our neighbors. But everyone has the best interest of this community at heart, and we are all neighbors. We do all live here, we do all care about each other, and I want to encourage people to keep that attitude, both in person and online. Online, it becomes easier to spew negativity without realizing there's a face and a person and the emotions on the other side of that. So to the extent that we can all keep the fact that these are volunteers and neighbors in mind, I would really appreciate that, and I really appreciate you.
We have Mr. Mike Weaver. Did you want to speak now, or?
I'll wait till item four.
Okay, so that's it. All right, Mrs. Marie.
Well, I think I'll just sit right here. It's really, I was going to talk about something else, but I'm just going to go on the fly here. I suspected there was something wrong with the city council when I moved here in '22, and after it got all settled, in '23, I started going to some of the meetings. And I went to the, to the budget meeting last year and saw some things I didn't like. And so I vowed that this year, I would go to every single meeting, and not just go a little while, but from beginning to end. And it's very strange here tonight that we have some campaigned people here from Miss Heinz, because usually there's only three or four, me and a few others that just have something they want to talk about. And I see tonight, we have campaign calling other people names, and, and people saying that a small crowd of people are, you know, complaining about things. And I'll tell you why. Because Miss Heinz is very gracious, she, she goes around the neighborhood and she does things for people, and she looks so helpful and sweet. But then she, she comes to here and she, she, she's like a bully in this, you know? And what I mean by that is, well, for one thing, this agenda tonight, you can read the agenda, but half the things, you don't know what they mean. And the habit of this council, because she packs it with people that are her friends, the habit of this council, all except Miss Lenea Bailey and Mr. Bob Hamburg, who has given up, he's not running this time. And what happens is they put things on the agenda, and then they vote on them. And they have obviously talked about their votes before the meeting, which is against the state polls, frankly. And then they vote on them before anybody has time to discuss them. And they, if they don't like what you're saying, then they cut you off at three minutes. But if they do like what you're saying, they let you go sit. Whenever somebody's looking at their watch, and who knows how long he would have gone campaigning and calling names, calling people names, if, if I hadn't been going like this to Deborah. She gives a lot of half-truths online, that's why people, you know? She, she just goes along, she just goes on and on online. And if you say something back to her, even if it's really nice, she'll just keep disputing until noon in the morning, she won't stop. She's very, she's very, the whole council is prepared to just spin and spin and spin on things that the older people that live on this side, you know? Don't, don't, yeah, I know.
If you would like to have that up and have one more statement.
Yeah, I have one last paragraph, if you don't mind. As the other lady did. We don't mean to be angry, it's just that we don't get to have input. We get three minutes, no response, no discussion from us later in the meeting. So many times, what we're saying isn't even addressed. And so we have kind of a closed council. Where I came from, we had a council where you could, you could talk back, you know? I'm not going to talk back, I mean, you could, you could have, have in the discussion as long as it didn't take too long, and, and, you know, have some input, but we're shut down. We're censored. And this, this council is not transparent, so that's what I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Chair, yeah? My representation?
Sure.
So the attorney, did you lay out some, what you were referring, whether the citizen's what I'm referring to was the Toma, I believe, where we're not allowed to respond? Could you explain some of that, so maybe the citizens better understand this relationship of what, with the structure of what we're allowing?
Good evening, councilmember, thank you. Stan Sprangely with Dent Var, I can say attorney. Sure, Toma, the Text Up the Meetings Act is something that the state legislature passed, placing rules on the governing body to host an agenda and be open and transparent, but limited to discuss those items to conduct its business. As part of the meeting, there is the right for the public with reasonable restrictions to address the council and bring concerns. And of course, that brings free speech, but you know, free speech is not absolute. You can't, you don't fire in a theater, you can't incite violence. You can certainly make expressions of opinion, and some of those disputes on public items of interest will inevitably create situations where there's differences of opinion. And sometimes those public comments may be unpleasant, but they cannot go into obscenity or name-calling or making allegations with criminal violations is, is, is not the proper way to address the governing body. You can't come in here and, and talk about things that are irrelevant to conducting public business. And, and in fact, not only has the legislature placed rules that you all have to abide by, they have also passed a criminal law, that you cannot disrupt a public meeting. You can't yell, you can't cite violence, you can't threaten people. That's actually a violation of the penal code. And you can, with fair warning, if you continue to do it, that can be reported and become a law enforcement issue. So, you know, there's duties on everybody, there's duties on the governing body, and there's duties on all of us as citizens to do our part to not be contrary, but to, you know, address grievances and opinions in a way that leads to deliberation and passing information without breaching the peace. So that, those are the rules of decorum, and it's state law. Thank you.
Could you also then clarify about social media? Because it was stated that.
This is off-topic at this point in time, and we do still have public comments.
Don't we have, isn't there a problem of a walking forum? To link councilmembers.
Again, off-topic at this point in time, and we still have public comments. His question was in reference to address the citizens' concerns. All right, we have Kathy Carlson. The current city council has done a stellar job with numerous projects, many things, and keep up the great work. You have our support. This is from Emma Davenport. I fully support the work that Deborah Heinz is doing on behalf of Wood Creek. Do I always agree with her? No, I do not. Do I feel Deborah listens to me and that she stays open to contrary viewpoints? Yes, I do. Do I know that nobody works harder on behalf of our community than Deborah does, and that her service on our city council is the greatest asset the city of Wood Creek could ever hope for? Absolutely. And that is the way to run a city, with give and take, with all voices being respectfully heard and all viewpoints being weighed in the balance, so that all residents are truly representative. Deborah Heinz sets the gold standard for selfless service to our community, and I think her worth all my heart. Michael Lithonia. I have lived in Wood Creek for more than 10 years and have witnessed various mayors and councils over the years. In the early years, it was if the mayor and council weren't unable to make decisions to move the city forward, occasionally appearing it to be in analysis paralysis. Since Mayor Rasko, along with councilmembers Grummer and Heinz and others, assume their positions, we as a city have moved forward in a very positive direction. Our streets have been repaved, and we have actual parks for all to enjoy. With an extremely minimal change in.
With an extremely minimal change in taxes, it saddens me that previous mayors, one of whom faced a lawsuit, as I understand it, for noncompliance with required open meetings, now feel the need to change our current direction. We must continue to evolve as a city to meet our increasingly more divergent needs. I stand in support of Mayor Rasko and council members Bailey, Grummer, and Hines. Thank you.
This is from Ms. Carolyn Nesbitt. Many times we take for granted and overlook things that are done for us to improve our way of life. We fail to thank those that give of themselves and instead play armchair quarterback when decisions are made that don't go our way, even when we don't have all the facts that went into the making of the decision. I have been here twenty-five years and can say this administration has put in a lot of effort and hard work to better Wood Creek. Thank you for the road improvements, parks, events, and everything else I failed to mention. It takes the village. Carolyn.
This comment is from Dorothy Patsian. My husband and I have been residents of Wood Creek for eighteen years and are amazed at the efficiency of this council. I commend the council for addressing and conquering challenges during these past forty years. The council under the leadership of Jeff Rasko and competent council members has achieved so much towards improving our community. Road improvements were the number one request of residents in Wood Creek on the survey initiated by this council. This mayor, the major feat, was accomplished with minimal inconvenience to residents and completed in record time with amazing results. Many of us lived through the construction nightmare of Brookcolor Drive, which fell into the direction of the prior mayor and council. The city of Wood Creek suffered through an ice storm that domed many trees and a devastating hailstorm a few months ago. The council acted quickly to aid residents in clearing down trees, arranging for them pickup and mulching after those natural disasters, after these natural disasters. The mulch was then made available to residents for use on their personal property. Mayor Rasko and specifically long-term council members Chris Grummer and Deborah Hines have supported numerous Wood Creek park improvements. The construction of a new park on Brookcolor was completed last year. A beautiful new gazebo was added to the triangle and Augusta Park now has a ping pong table and bocce court. Above all, the city council has been transparent and communicating with residents, sending newsworthy updates to ensure homeowners are aware of what is happening in the community. Thank you, Mayor Rasko and council members, for your dedication, commitment, and personal sacrifice to ensure Wood Creek is a wonderful place to live. This comment is from Mr. Ed Fleming. Dear Mayor Rasko and Wood Creek City Council members, we are all suffering through a very acrimonious election cycle where voters hear the daily drumroll of complaints and free evaluations of opponents' mental competency. So my remarks are a bit different. I want to thank you, Jeff, Deborah Hines, Linnea Bailey, Chris Grummer, and Bob Hambrick very much for having the vision of using bond funding to pave all Wood Creek streets last year. As a former member of the Potnum Road Panel, I am well aware of the intelligence and hard work it took for the council to overcome inertia and get the job done. Special thanks to Linnea Bailey, our city council liaison and leader, for the great job she did for the citizens of Wood Creek. Many thanks.
The last comment is from Mayor Rasko, and I believe he's on the video chat with us. He did intend to make the comment himself if available at this time. I think he's unmuting now. Mayor Rasko, can you hear us? Are you able to come through?
I can hear you. I'm trying to get the video on.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Now you can see me. And that's good. So, um, okay, first, I apologize for not being at the council meeting in person. I had signed up to attend the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference in Houston several weeks ago. And I continue to advocate for continuing education for council staff and board members. So in one way, I'm setting an example. I'm continuing to learn how to be the best mayor I can be for you. But boy, I wanted to be there. But I am leaving you in very capable hands. Mayor Protem Deborah Hines is the hardest working person I know and quite possibly the smartest. She has been my right arm since I came mayor three years ago. And she is a go-to person for all of her colleagues on the council, for the staff, and especially for the citizens of Wood Creek. We have an amazing city council that works hard for you every day. Three years ago, we completed our comprehensive plan, which tells us what you, the citizens of Wood Creek, want to see accomplished. It is our guiding star and what drives this council. It has already manifested itself in getting our roads in great shape and parks we can take immense pride in. There's much more to be done and much more to come. The the one thing that bothers me, and I'm not going to go into detail on this, but yeah, we we do take potshots. That's part of the, that's part of the job. That's, that's why they pay us the big bucks, right, kids? And and, you know, you're welcome to your opinion, but don't, don't, don't try to divide the city. There's no reason to politicize council business that should be nonpartisan. We try to keep it that way on council. And and don't try to pit groups against each other. It's not the young families versus the older residents. It's not Republican versus Democrat. We're all from Wood Creek and we need to work together. This council and staff has listened to our citizens and we're working to meet all of their needs as best we can. It's not always quick. It takes a lot of work, but we stick to it because we love Wood Creek. We've worked especially hard to bring unity to our town, and we've had great success, in my opinion. Thank you for your continued support and keep letting us know your priorities. Your city is our city. Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Linnea. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Deborah. Thank you, staff. It's just, it's an honor to serve you.
Thank you. All right. We are going to move into the agenda portion of the meeting. We do not have a consent agenda this evening. We only have a regular agenda. So the first item on this agenda is consideration and possible action to approve the portion of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax rate dedicated to maintenance and operations that it be point one oh nine nine and the total fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax rate of point one nine oh eight as reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to Texas Tax Code twenty-six point oh five A.
Chair, may I?
Yes.
I move to approve amending the portion of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax rate dedicated to maintenance and operations be point one zero nine nine and the total fiscal year for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax rate of point one nine oh eight as reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget pursuant to tax tax code twenty-six point oh five, section A.
I'm not going to read all of that into record again, as we just stated the same thing twice, but I officially recognize the motion. I would like to introduce this item because we had kind of a fluke happen this year, which hasn't happened in the last three and seems pretty rare. But the tax office provided these numbers to us, and unfortunately, there was a mistake in those calculations from them, which meant that there was a mistake in our M and O. What's really great about this is we're not changing our budget and we're not changing the no new revenue tax rate either. All of that's going to stay the same. It's basically kind of a title correction. And this is explained on page five of the packet in the cover letter, if you need it in writing. But I just kind of wanted to assure anyone who was a little bit confused while we were bringing this back up that it was just a thing that came from the county. They were like, uh-oh, there's a mistake. Let's get it fixed. And so this was our first opportunity to address that. Are there any comments or discussion at this time? All right, we can move into a roll call vote.
Aye. Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Yes, motion passes with four aye and Bob is not here. He is absent, so no vote. All right, we'll move into item two on the agenda, which is, which is consideration and possible action under ordinance of the city council of the city of Wood Creek, Texas. Ordinance number twenty-four dash ten dash oh nine dash one, adopting a tax rate of point one nine oh eight per one hundred dollars, consisting of the approved maintenance and operation rate point one oh nine nine and a debt service rate of point oh eight oh nine of assessed valuation for the city of Wood Creek to be effective for the twenty twenty-four tax year, fiscal year twenty-five.
Chair, may I? I move to adopt the amending ordinance of the city council of the city of Wood Creek, Texas, ordinance twenty-four, ten, oh nine, dash one, adopting the tax rate of point one nine oh eight per one hundred dollars, consisting of the approved maintenance and operations rate point one oh nine nine and the debt service rate of point oh eight oh nine of assessed valuation for the city of Wood Creek to be effective for the twenty twenty-four tax year of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five and post appropriately on the city website.
All right, Linnea Bailey seconded. And this is amending the ordinance to take care of the thing we just changed. So if there is no discussion or questions, we'll move forward into a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chris Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Deborah Hines.
Aye.
All right, motion passes for aye. Sorry, I have to reset it. I know all this stuff is so awkward. It sounds silly when Jeff is doing it, and then when you do it yourself, it's even sillier. All right, we are going to move into item three on our agenda, which is discussion and possible action to award the city of Wood Creek twenty twenty-four safety enhancement program bid to Myers Concrete.
May I, or sorry, chair, may I? I move to award the city of Wood Creek twenty twenty-four safety enhancement program bid to Myers Concrete. If I may?
Yes.
I would like to work with staff to create a flyer after the presentation to update the residents of Deerfield on this decision tonight.
That is a great idea, as communication has been lacking in that area. Mr. Myers is actually elected to join us this evening, so thank you for doing that. We received two bids. Our engineers worked with staff and a selection was made to recommend to council for Myers Concrete to take this bid for this package and includes repaving of the east to west portion of Deerfield, among other things. But I believe that that is the most important issue of the package.
Thank you all for trusting me. I moved here in Wood Creek in nineteen seventy-six and it's been fun. Wood Creek's grown a lot. I'm moving to Deborah's backfield. Anyway, I appreciate y'all going with our firm. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, when I first read the bid, I was pretty happy with it. But then I was a little skeptical too, because it was considerably lower than what Freeland Turk had presented. So of course, I thought, well, maybe not everything is in that bid. So I went line by line and compared, and everything that was in the Freeland Turk bid is in the Myers bid. It is simply that they didn't include thirty thousand of contingency and the general conditions were much more reasonable. And line by line, it's a good bid. Thank you.
That's very unusual to be. Usually, we're a lot higher than engineer or contractors in general. But I think the the paving company that's been doing all the old paving was probably too far for them to come out here and it's right in our backyard, but appreciate you going through the bit.
Or did you want?
No.
I actually have a question of the the package. It's very massive and it's written in engineering language, I guess. And so I just want to verify that when we do go to Deer Creek, we're also including patching on the other section. So we're paving north, east to west, and we're patching north to south.
I don't think it's detailed on, you're talking about Deerfield.
Yes.
Yeah, it it does. It has a level up. Yes, it's patching the area, maybe not a hundred percent of Deerfield, but the area that get paving, it's getting patching right there. And if there's potholes on the way Deerfield, I'll fill them in, you know.
Right.
I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, so the north to south corridor, just to follow what I'm saying, is waiting on a grant, but also just have, it's not, it's been neglected and needs to be addressed while they continue waiting on their grant. So when this package was initially being designed, and Ms. Norris is online, she might be able to help us, there was discussion of making sure those potholes are smoothed. But in reviewing it, it wasn't detailed in that manner. So I think we were feeling concerned that
So you just want the hose filled in, but when the grant comes in and award the next session?
On that other section.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, hi, this is Melanie Norris of Freeland Turk. Can I just clarify a few things? Do you mind?
Yeah.
So regarding the Deerfield overlay, we did include level up to help patch everything along that east to west side. And we do not have any level up at this time included on that north to south end. So if that is something we want to go ahead and get in at this time, we could potentially change order that in if this recommendation moves forward with this contract. But I just wanted to clarify, we don't have any level up on the north to south. It's just that east to west portion to level up, fill in those potholes and then overlay.
So she
Temporary.
She put a unit cost bid together so you can adjust those numbers with the units? Is that what, if you want to pay or, you know, level up more?
Won't the other side be paying within six months, maybe shorter?
To address that question, a timeline was released. We're TLC that projected that as a possibility. We are still waiting on an updated design, which if there is any further need for adjustment on that design, it will push that timeline out again. So I, it sounds like we have the opportunity to do a change order this evening to include just pothole filling on the north-south corridor if we wish. It also sounds like we could wait and potentially bundle it with later work. I would entertain a motion if one was presented.
I'm moved that we, I'm moved to manage to include, please help me with the wording you would like.
Potholes.
Leveling up? Pothole leveling up for the north-south section of Deerfield. I include it into this plan.
So the motion would now be to award the city of Wood Creek twenty twenty-four safety enhancement program bid to Myers Concrete with the amendment of pothole fill on north to south section of Deerfield.
And Chris seconded.
Ms. Norris, does that satisfy your needs this evening?
I want to hear it in your head.
She's still there. Did she have? If she unmuted.
Thank you. Sorry, wasn't able to unmute. Yes, once we award the contract, then that's something we can work with Myers Concrete on to kind of get a quantity there in square yards for that level up. But we need to have the contract and everything in place prior to that.
Just one comment. Both sides, the east-west and the north side are similar in length. And the level up for the east-west is thirty thousand dollars. So I just want to make sure we have a cost estimate before we go forward with this and how it coordinates with our final.
Forgive me if I'm wrong. I believe this is just pothole filling for north-south, not the full level up and road resurfacing of the east-west. Everyone is clear on that understanding? Is that the intention?
That was my
Yeah.
Because we don't want to invest that money and then the grant comes around and we tear all out.
We want to invest money, but we also need to be conscientious about that it's only a temporary solution. Yes?
Minor.
Okay. Are there any further comments, Mr. Richardson? Did you have anything that you would add? All right, then we can move on to vote.
Councilmember Chris Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Deborah Hines.
Aye, so that's four ayes. No names heard. That means it passes. I apologize. We did roll call again. We can move into the unified hand raising. All right, so on item number four, we do have two residents that are planning to speak. We have Mr. John Stowe first.
Yes, should I speak for mayor?
Yes, that's great. You're perfect on the camera.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Um, so I I just, I don't have a a full understanding of what what's happening with the cul-de-sac. But I do understand the need for improvement to to make egress for uh safety and security vehicles. In fact, this morning, we had a a truck pull through that had a long trailer on and actually got jackknifed around the tree. It blocked off the cul-de-sac and we couldn't even get out of the cul-de-sac. So it's certainly a concern. There's been many vehicles that have pulled up into the yard to make that turn since it's such a small cul-de-sac. Um, my concern is, is that there, um, if I have the understanding right, that a vehicle would, the tree in the middle of the the road would be removed, which is great. Then the vehicle would come, enter into the cul-de-sac and then they would back into what looks to be like a ramp or a driveway that goes down into one of the lots. That we own in the cul-de-sac. Um, and my biggest concern with that is the the rain runoff. Um, already we have a big rain runoff issue there. We had the property surveyed by water engineering firm. It came out for a thirteen to fourteen percent grade throughout that lot. And the water flow from that lot to our downward neighbors is devastating. Um, over the years, they've built burns on on our property. They've built uh retention walls on their properties. Um, in fact, the one uh to our immediate uh below the property is, they've built two retainer walls to to hold back the water. So I'm concerned that this this ramp is what it looks like from the drawings. And maybe like, you know, consult with the the engineering for the contracting firm that's gonna do the work. Is that this is going to create a twenty foot wide gutter that's going to pour down into that lot. Right now, we've got some rock that kind of break up the water to help disperse the water some, so it's not so devastating down the hill. Um, I don't know if there's a plan for anything to break up the water, like on normally on the spillway from a dam. You would have some concrete barriers that are offset so that the water comes down, it hits those, kind of breaks up, goes down to the next ones, hits those, goes out. Also, because that land is so graded downward, I would be concerned that, you know, a uh uh semi truck with a trailer. Would go to back down that thing and if they got away from them, they're gonna go, you know, further down the hill into the yard, which is gonna be pretty devastating uh for the trees and such. So I just want to have better understanding that what we're getting into, I I know it needs to be addressed. Uh, we see it happen all the time. In fact, when the city put all those signs up that tell you to go this way around the tree, uh which we kind of figured out, but. It's okay, we got the signs now. That, one of them ran over almost immediately uh from a big vehicle that had tried to get around that tree. So I just, I'm hoping there's an opportunity before this all gets passed that we have some some level of input since it's gonna impact us, you know, directly.
That is your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our next public comment is from Ms., did you have a a point of fact that you needed to add?
No.
Okay, our next public comment from Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. Um, I haven't seen the the drawings, so I'm not sure what he's talking about, but uh, you know, and and I think you know. Uh, I know that I I had a medical emergency is what happened, is why we asked for this. And so I I was choking and uh my wife Kristen called an ambulance. So I'm standing at the kitchen window over the sink choking and I see the ambulance come up and it passed my house. And drove into the cul-de-sac. And then it's stuck in the cul-de-sac and I'm choking, you know, I was already scared. It was very frightening. And uh I have some knowledge of uh. Of the design of cul-de-sacs and things. I'm a land surveyor. I do a lot of construction and and development kind of work. And uh I'm pretty sure that that does not meet the fire code. And um so I just really wanted to just emphasize that I would, fortunately, obviously, I'm here. And so uh, but I could see there's some other situations. If uh if an ambulance has trouble, I'm certain a fire truck would. And uh I do know that even our uh garbage pickup doesn't go down there. It stops at my house, really. And everybody brings their cans up there. So uh I just really just wanted to drive home the fact that there's a problem there and I just don't want anyone to experience what I did. You know, and 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 it could have been a lot worse. So really, thank you.
So I will entertain, or I'll go ahead and read the item and then I'll entertain a motion. Discussion of possible action to select a design and authorize the city of Wood Creek engineering firm Freeland Turk. And city staff to draft and post a request for bid to improve the cul-de-sac at Champion Court to enhance safety.
Chair of me.
Yes, sir.
I move to select the hammerhead turnaround as recommended by the city engineers. And authorize the city of Wood Creek engineering firm Freeland Turk and the city staff to draft and post a request for bid. To improve the cul-de-sac at Champion Court to enhance safety.
Second. Mrs. Richardson is a second.
Um, are we having a presentation, thanks?
I love to comment.
Well, uh, let's introduce the item first if we can. I know we had a couple of public comments, but as y'all have heard, there was an emergency uh occurring at this. Cul-de-sac which alerted us to the fact that this cul-de-sac might not meet uh standards. And so uh Mr. Jim Burton got in action immediately and had the cul-de-sac assessed by engineers. And they found that it is insufficient or deficient in meeting emergency standards. Um, it's been that way for a very long time, but unfortunately, worst case scenario has now happened, which alerted us to the problem. With that in mind, we are sort of charged with health and safety uh in the city. That's one of the only things we're actually supposed to be doing. So it's really important that we brought this item to council. And so uh Freeland Turk designs two designs to consider. You'll see them in your packet. One of them is a traditional cul-de-sac. Which is the preference of the city for installing cul-de-sacs. However, the hammerhead turn was also displayed um as it creates less impact in the area, preserves more trees, creates less impervious coverage. It's also a smaller project in general. The engineers have actually issued a statement recommending the hammerhead turn, which is also in your packet for reference if you need it. And so that is the introduction of the item.
Are these, oh, I'm sorry, are these engineers doing the presentation or no?
I don't know, but we'll go ahead and hear a comment and then maybe defer after a round of comments.
All right, um, I have heard some of how this uh item came about, so that's part of the mystery. Because we had a meeting of the infrastructure and mobility panel yesterday. And they were questioning why this is the sort of thing that usually goes through our panel. And we have professional engineers and professional volunteers that dedicate their time. And that way we get the use out of our citizens. And so it was questioned why they were bypassed. This seems to be the sort of thing that should be reviewed by our committee rather than just sent straight to um the engineers. Because we do have engineers in our group. And then we could contact them, the questions that were asked. What is the fire chief's position on this? Have emergency vehicles been, been um, have they cleared this? Um, there's, there's issues of trees and cost. So what I would like to have this reviewed by infrastructure committee before we just pass it on. To a vote um with, without giving our committee of volunteers an opportunity to review uh this action.
Do you have any other comments in this round? What do you think you all might have?
I think. I I do see your point with that. Um, but the fact is, we've already had our city engineers take a look at it, make their recommendations. Um, I have spoken to other neighbors um that live on Champions Court and I, he also told me how you two feel about it. And um I just feel like this is something that needs to be done. It's a safety issue and. Um, I do agree with the hammerhead approach rather than the circular turnaround approach because I do think that has more of an impact on the area, so um I'm supporting that.
Could you relate any way? I'll, I'll take my liberty of adding a singular comment. I think in the event of an emergency or something that is more pressing. That some of these steps that we would pursue on projects that are less urgent are valid. In this case, we've already had uh one very serious incident and then even today, another incident where if there had been an emergency, we would be in a bowl again. Right? So whenever we have safety issues brought to our table, when we don't act as soon as possible, we put the city at risk. And at this point in time, given that we have the paid professionals that have issued statements. And I did inquire about the fire marshal coming out and issuing a statement as well. And the engineers were able to confidently say, it's deficient. You're not gonna get any new information or any sort of um praise from the the fire marshal. So that was not uh a concern and so we, we decided to save that that gentleman's time and not bring Mr. Speaker's out. Um, with that in mind, I would like to talk to the engineers, Ms. Norris. Um, and I believe that the the concern of runoff would be a valid uh point to hear a way on uh from them if they had any information there. If that was already in consideration, because they, if there are topographical maps that show grade. So I imagine that was taken into account, but you know, I don't wanna, what do they say about assuming, right? Is she still on?
She is, she has not reached her hand.
Ms. Norris, if you're available to comment on uh possible, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, um, to kind of speak to those concerns, so that is, I appreciate hearing those concerns. We will definitely take the drainage issues into account. Um, at this stage, we've kind of just done these preliminary designs, so we do still need to get the area surveyed. Uh, based on some like preliminary contours out there, there is a significant drop. There's probably at least five feet for that kind of leg of that hammerhead turnaround that we're looking out there. Um, so we'll probably investigate a few solutions there, but definitely take into account some protection on that downstream side. Um, and just make it, make sure that we won't um create any additional issues there.
Great. So to clarify, in case people aren't understanding what that means, is that this is just to authorize the creation of the bid where the design. Would um go into those deeper levels of addressing flooding issues. So it's really good you spoke up tonight, put that in there, be in their bonnet on that. And um if we have another round of comments, we can, does anyone have anything new to add or?
Well, just one, I guess, with the bid, we'll get a cost estimate. Um, I went and looked at the cul-de-sac. Is this only taking out the one tree?
That, that is what the proposal says at this point in time. Now, in design. What comes back to us to approve for, for the contract, you could make additional adjustments there if there were concerns. All right, if there are no other comments, we will move into voting. Uh, instead of the roll call vote, we're just see a show of hands. If you are in support of this, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So four ayes and no nays means this item passes. Thank you so much, Ms. Norris and Mr. Myers, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Um, perhaps we'll be seeing your bid on that project as well.
Yeah.
Bundle it, like progressive, right? Thank you all so much.
Hi, hi, that's Mr. Marsh.
I don't know if that.
Okay, uh, watching your five minute reset. Thank you for being here.
No, it's.
Oh, yeah. I don't want some, at least I have survival, someone else may not. My dad's been poor. We need them to build bridges, hope for that to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you.
If I did a nice chat, it would.
All right, now we can stretch out.
Okay, so my. Just send an email um to Jim and and CC, your husband, about your house. Which tree it is, so that way when they keep the engineers, they know that that's the tree that. You know, if it does have any effect on the plant.
Yeah. Okay. I just didn't take it. Thank you for being here. Sorry, I didn't make you wait so long.
I, I have to counsel me.
Okay, you trapped, you have a snack bag. I would love to get more comfortable chairs eventually.
Yeah, which has been mine.
Are you gonna try to go in the next, do the thing? Do you know what you need?
Uh, I don't know, Krista has.
Okay. Well, y'all have time.
Thank you, Jim. I would give it to her.
Did you ever write at the uh?
Oh, no.
That's really sound good. If you're during. Out there before, couldn't know it sounds.
No, I didn't.
We saw our video.
I'm looking at the scope of following things on the same. I looked at that. Yeah, but it was pretty much like. Number, you know, there's a mark of this.
All right.
I had no idea.
That one was actually.
Yeah.
And I was turned to the two, I actually. I was thinking, it's okay.
No, but why you go for a lot?
Oh, no, I didn't look at that.
No, that's the one that I can't really.
Is that the one, not.
Well, it's um.
I think.
Yeah. Because um. That's one of the streets that have.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, drink.
And I mean. Go categorize it.
What it shows. Sort of social discussions. But it's like, you have to worry about that. But it's about. Very, I don't tell. See, I don't know how to continue. Again.
When you're ready?
Actually, there is a gentleman who died here.
Really?
Yeah. Uh, from flooding?
Yes.
Whoa, you'd have to dig back pretty far, but yeah, we've had a lot of life lost in in the whole area for flooding.
Really? No, I mean in Wood Creek. Well, if you, the low water crossing area, if you count that.
No, I was trying to think, so we, we. We had whole homes destroyed and it, I don't know if anybody died in that flood, but all of the townhomes are gone. Uh, we definitely, somebody's died by seven A um from flooding. Somebody's died by Fisher store from flooding. Uh.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And in the spring. And it's. I don't remember if lives were lost in the townhome floods that took out, but my child, one of my childhood homes is gone. Um, it was really bad though. Um, I don't know if you count pets. Their pets lost. I don't remember back on that. I thought you were talking about accidents and.
No.
We, we had lost someone as well there.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at the language on that one.
Oh, that's a, if if you have the code letter, it's a state requirement.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that's, does that language have to be added in parade or course?
I'm not interested during the item. I apologize. I thought you were talking about something we already discussed. I can't discuss future items.
No, no, it, because it talks about a corridor.
All right, we are gonna resume this meeting. We are lacking two council members. Let me be okay. Drag them up.
Uh, the feeling we're gonna try to resume the meeting, five minutes has passed and Rachel said she went home.
She went home?
No, she went on the porch.
We still have four hours. I was like, there's only a few reasons why somebody leaves a meeting rapidly like that and none of them are good.
The thing is it lean.
Yeah, we're gonna. Unless we do another recess or something.
I guess she's getting something from her car.
Okay, well, that is, we have forms, so we will proceed unless for at your discretion. Uh so at seven forty, I'll bring this meeting back into order, seven forty-one, actually. And uh we are going to proceed into item number five, which is discuss discussion and possible action to post a request for qualifications for a city secretary for the city of Wood Creek.
Sure, may I?
Yes, sir.
I move to post a request for qualifications for the city secretary for the city of Wood Creek.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Uh Bailey is the second motion from Grumarch. Um well, I don't know how much of an introduction we need on this item. We did lose our previous city secretary and as part of the process for filling that position, we have to do this formal motion. Um in your packet, we have an updated copy of what the RFQ would state. If there is not any adjustments or to that, then I would entertain a vote, but if there's commentary or.
I have one um.
Yes.
Just one. Actually, I really like everything you put together, but it says uh the end to apply for this is November sixth. That's less than a month. And it just seems like we should, would allow a month for this to be an active opening.
Yeah.
Can that just be adjusted a little?
Uh I do not disagree. I I just want to offer one comment for consideration.
Okay.
Um we are not planning on having the second meeting in November, which meant that the soonest we could fill a position would be in January, because we are also not planning to have the second meeting in December. So valid concern, and that's something that if you want to take that into consideration, stay with that motion. I would entertain that, but just if if the soonest it could be posted is the first December meeting or the soonest we could wrap it up, right? Then that would likely mean the first appointment would actually occur in January, which is part of our first half to be operating about.
Okay, uh my concern is we want this to be so nice and clean. And if somehow it looks like we were limiting the amount of time. So I see the dilemma um. Okay, then and we state that as far as we're not going to have a meeting.
So Mayor Rasko has already canceled the second November meeting because it's the night before Thanksgiving.
Right.
He's also, or sorry, it's, is it Thanksgiving? I forget, but no, this is a Thursday. It's a night before Thanksgiving. And then the one in December, I believe, is Christmas Eve or Christmas, actually. So that was a kind of a determining factor there. So if you look at the timeline, if we close the applications later than a month, the first meeting that they could be considered would be in December, but that's if we had already processed all the applications, had interviews. So you see what I'm saying is that we could very well be operating without a city secretary for um three months or more and.
But if it were just adjusted to be exactly a month, I can remember none.
This is the Wednesday before the meeting, so that would give us literally one week to process applications with the, to try to get to that November meeting. And so I mean, I'm all that, I'm not arguing against you. I don't disagree. And when this was drafted, it was more than a month, but here we are. So if there is a date you would like to adjust it to, we can make that motion. Uh and we get hold of votes. It's just, I was just asking everybody to keep that in mind. Uh we are supposed to report during recess. I just, sorry. Just for future, thank you.
Well, I suppose.
Look at my calendar real fast.
Yeah, let's, let's just see. I'm just.
So November thirteenth would be the first meeting we could consider an applicant for the job with this timeline. If you push the timeline.
To the nine. Just trying to make it look like.
If if you pushed it out to the twentieth, then that would give us two to three weeks to get to the December meeting, which could work. Would you like to do that?
I would.
Okay. Uh I move that we amend the RFQ to state the date of November twentieth.
Yes, a second.
Uh second, Lenea Bailey. Do we have any further commentary or concerns on this topic?
I just want to comment that I had studied other cities, you know, from prior work we've done. I like the price range that's in keeping with other cities that I've studied, the forty to sixty being that experience. I also like the fact that you're including uh the corporate study. Other cities did that and you don't have to have that qualification, but it's good, a good thing to work for to that professionalism. So very pleased with this offering.
All right, um this was a blend of two from the sitting with only minor adjustments. So it's something the last two RFQs and put them together and um just a few things here and there. All right, so the full motion or the amendment we need to vote on first, oh, we did not do that earlier. We didn't do two votes earlier. On item three.
Yeah, you're done discussing. So you got a second.
Yeah, on this item, we didn't vote on the amendment.
Oh, I have to go back.
I think it's okay because I read the entire thing and I believe we could go back if we need to reconsider it, but. On this one, let's uh vote on the amending motion to change the date to November twentieth. Uh I'll entertain ayes with a hand raised if you supported at this time. Aye, so three ayes and one nay. Motion passes to include that amendment. So the full motion now reads to post a request for qualifications for city secretary for the city of Wood Creek with the amending of the date to November twentieth. We'll do the same. Raise your hand to vote aye if you wish to proceed. Aye. All ayes, no nays, motion passes. Mr. Springer, do we need to go back to item three to formally vote on the amending?
Recall it, it's proximate and uh just to close that out.
So we're going to recall item three to discuss the uh vote for the amendment, which was adding pothole fill on the north to south corridor of Deerfield. The vote was made by Councilmember Grumarch, seconded by Richardson. I'll go ahead and entertain the vote of, raise your hand aye if you're interested. Aye. Four ayes. Amendment motion passes. Do we need to formally vote again?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll formally vote on the entire motion, which is to award the city of Wood Creek twenty twenty-four Safety Enhancement Program bed to Myers contract concrete with the amendment that a pothole fill on the north to south section of Deerfield will be included. Are y'all ready to vote? If you support it, all aye, raise your hand. Aye. So motion still passes. Thank you all, and I apologize for my novice behavior. Uh all right, item number six. Discussion and possible action to delegate all duties of the Office of City Secretary of the City of Wood Creek to the current acting and city administrator, Jim Burton, who may then assign some tasks to other city staff to distribute the workload.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I move to delegate all duties of the Office of City Secretary of the City of Wood Creek to the current acting city administrator, Jim Burton, who may then assign some tasks to other city staff to distribute the workload.
I will second this. Um at this point in time, we do not have a city secretary. Whenever we lose a municipal officer, we must formally delegate those duties to someone else unless our code does it for us, which we actually fixed recently for the city administrator position. I'm not sure we went in and formally addressed this, but just to eliminate any kinds of vagueness or concern, this would clear that up. And when it says assign some tasks to other city staff, essentially um Ms. Barker has been assisting assisting us with like agenda posting and and taking a minutes. So we would like to be able to um allow Mr. Burton to request staff to assist him. Is there any further discussion? All right, with no discussion on the item, uh if you'll just raise your hand if you're in support and say aye. Aye. Four ayes, no nays, motion passes. Uh Mr. Burton will now be assigned all the roles of the city secretary um and will be able to distribute that workload as needed. The next item, discussion and possible action to approve a stipend for city staff, Tappy Barker, not to exceed two hundred fifty dollars per week as compensation for added duties that may occur during the duration of the time that the city of Wood Creek takes to hire a new city secretary.
Sure, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve a second for city staff, Tappy Baker, not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars per week as compensation for added duties that may occur during the duration of the time that the city of Wood Creek takes to hire a new city secretary.
A second. All right, so we are deliberating giving Ms. Barker a stipend of two hundred fifty dollars while we look for a new city secretary. Do we have any discussion on the topic, Ms. Bailey?
Just some clarification on um at what point time would that stop? Would be after a new secretary is trained um.
It says hire in the motion. If you would like to change the language, you could issue in a minute.
Well, I'm not sure how. It just seems that what we're doing is is trying to compensate for the extra work that Miss Baker is doing, and that won't stop the second we hire someone. But it's, it's a difficult thing to define when should we end it, so.
I believe that one of the biggest concerns is the attendance of meetings, which was not previously in her role. And then the added workload during the day as well. And the fact that the uh the municipal office of city secretary has some legal ramifications for what it's doing. And so the pay typically is measured with that sort of responsibility. However, Ms. Barker has been an office administrator and her pay is reflective of that role. So I think this was an effort. Well, I'll be honest, I introduced this item. This is my effort to acknowledge her assistance and added efforts that she's taking on, having to stay later in the day. Um you know, she's doing her job plus a portion of someone else's job now.
Well, let's just let it stand and then when the time comes, we may adjust it.
All right, if there's no further discussion from anyone, I'll entertain the vote. If you support this, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Four ayes, no nays, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Barker, for your assistance.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, authorize staff to draft and issue a request for proposal proposals for administrative and planned development services for the Resilient Communities Program, RCT grant program administered by the Texas General Land Office, Blue.
Sure, ma'am. I move to authorize staff to draft and issue requests for proposals for administrative and planned development services for the Resilient Communities Program Grant Program administered by the Texas General Land Office.
Second, thank you. Richardson is a second. I, are you going to introduce the item?
With mine.
Go for it.
Um Wimberly applied for and has was awarded a grant totaling three hundred thousand dollars for a comprehensive plan and corresponding code rewrite. Since we are at the time when we are needing to update our Wood Creek comprehensive plan, it would be smarter of us to apply for this grant and ease the tax burden on the citizens. The grant is a resilient community program grant from the General Land Office. There is no required match for this grant. I suggest we pursue this funding and use outside professional management services. Council will need to authorize the issuance of request for proposals. Grant Works can then submit a proposal to manage this grant process. The element I am most excited about is that this grant would cover the code updating that we've been better align our code with the comprehensive plan, which would then better reflect the citizens' visions for their city. We actually have a member from Grant Works that she wishes to speak on this at all.
Mrs. Warren, did you have anything you wanted to add? Well, I I think Mr. Grumarch explained that pretty well. And uh when you put out the, I'll see that. When you put out the RFQs, you are required to send it to more than one firm. So uh we just want to make that that clear, that it's not just, it won't be just Grant Works that we'll put in appropriately, but uh we do hope that you move forward with uh wanting to do this grant because you know, very rarely do we have a grant of any amount that doesn't require a match. So it's, it's, you know, for the three hundred thousand dollars that uh the General Land Office is providing in this grant, it will pay for your administrative services and your plans as well. That's my opinion.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh and just so everyone knows, Grant Works is actually who helped us get the Deerfield grant, so thank you.
Do we have any further commentary on this item? All right, I will entertain the vote. If you are in support of this item, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Four ayes. One enthusiastic aye. No nays, and so this motion will pass. We will be uh putting out that RFQ or RP actually, and I hope you have fun. Thank you. Uh all right, number nine, discussion and possible action to adopt a floodplain damage prevention ordinance for the city of Wood Creek, Texas.
Sure, may I?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the floodplain damage prevention ordinance for the city of Wood Creek, Texas.
I will. A second. All right, Councilmember Richardson is your second. Um to introduce this item, Mayor Rasko received a strongly worded email from the state that essentially said, you must, and so we shall. Um yes, the language was provided by them. All I did was take the draft document they provided and I plugged in the Wood Creek information specific to us that they also provided. So I was a little curious why they didn't just do that for us, but I did. And it's in the packet. Um it is something that due to, I mean, the introduction is there, but essentially the state changed the floodplain maps recently. And because of that, it it has a greater impact in Wood Creek than it did previously. Um and so here we are.
May I?
Yeah.
I actually have a question. So city attorney, have you seen this document in the packet?
I have, yes.
It's the format. I'm going to only talk about the format, not content. The format's different than what we're used to. We have all those warehouse sections um. I'm saying, I'm guessing you're not objecting to this format.
Right, right. Uh that's more of style over substance.
Okay.
And um um you know, probably modernized and updated and um I've seen um these rollouts in the same letter sent to various governmental entities um for the need to update. Um it's an important thing to have in place, updated so that everything's current and um up to date, and it's a health and safety thing. But yeah, it doesn't affect the substance other than the update.
Because I was, we were at least told on council that that warehouse section has a very legal weight to it that protects the city.
It can, depending on the situation.
And it just doesn't necessarily apply here.
Right, okay.
To comment, I believe sections A and B do uh satisfy what you would typically see in a warehouse.
Correct. I I mean, I, it was only four man taking up.
This one is very boring. Our is a little bit prettier.
That was my only question. The content is great. Thank you.
And this one, Mr. Bayes, I I don't know how indeed anyone or end up, anyone reviewed this. Uh basically, because we all understood the mission, essentially the state told us what to do and we just executed it. All right, with no further commentary, I'll entertain the vote on this item. If you are in favor of passing this ordinance for flood damage prevention, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Four ayes, no nays, motion passes. Thank you all. All right, so item ten, discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution designating the totality of the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the city of Wood Creek as lost revenue that be work be incorporated in the general fund and allocated for drainage and planning projects during the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Sure, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the resolution. I move to adopt the resolution designating the totality of the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the City of Wood Creek as lost revenue be incorporated into the general fund and allocated for drainage and planning projects during the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
I second.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Richardson. To introduce this item, we, well, first off, we do listen to the public and we had repetitively heard what happened to this money, where did it go? We're concerned. And so, yes, everyone who has been on council and attending all of these meetings had a pretty strong understanding of what was going on, which was we had claimed the funds after the government changed and broadened the ways you could claim the funds. And so that released us from the urgency of the timeline of having to meet some sort of obligation and plan. We, the city got the money and it's free and clear. What we did need to do, though, and what was not done, was pass a resolution acknowledging that. And so in our learning process with Mr. Bayes assisting our city now, a true city administrator with great experience, he was able to highlight that this was an item that should have happened that year that we all missed. And so this is just kind of cleaning up that business. And the really cool thing is that this will then be on the website for people to reference. And so they will know definitively where that money is, what city council's plan is for it. And we can acknowledge that, yes, we have it in our general fund. We are planning to use it for drainage and planning projects on that front. So. And I cannot write this resolution. Mr. Bayes did.
All right, well, I read this, maybe not with that depth of understanding. But seeing that a fund was being moved, the general fund. And then let me bring up one of my pet fears now is that we still don't have a balance sheet. And I looked at our balance sheet as of October twenty twenty three and October first twenty twenty four. And we still have a great deal of confusion. We're showing cash from operated from consolidated cash due from consolidated cash, four hundred fifty eight thousand, and then another claim on cash, five hundred eighty five thousand, and an operating account of five hundred eighty seven thousand. Very little change from last year. At least we've gotten rid of a major negative. There were two hundred sixty six items that had to be adjusted. That's been done. But still, I feel very uncomfortable saying we are going to take these funds and transfer them from a separate funded account into our general operating account when we still don't know where our bank balances are. And I guess it was also an opportunity for me to ask, when are we going to have a balance sheet?
All right, Mr. Bayes is not on the meeting this evening. He's actually in that same conference as other people. So unfortunately, there's not a person able to address that concern. I can tell you, though, that they are working with the accountant, Mr. Bayes's, that they were considering having it available at this meeting, but given that Mr. Bayes, Mayor Rasko, and Mr. Burton couldn't be here this evening, it made sense to push that item a little further. That also gives them a couple more weeks to make sure all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Whatever you are accessing right now may still be inaccurate as we have an accountant that is still working on recoding things and making sure things are accurate.
Well, I will, there are corrections. There's a great many corrections.
Yes.
There's two major ones.
The information uploaded into FundView by Mr. Rule was wildly inaccurate and had a lot of complications and it has taken multiple people to undo that mess. And we are still working in it. You yourself worked on it for several months. So we are still progressing through that and doing our best. And with the new website, we are also going to focus on making sure more of the documents that should have been posted by staff previously get uploaded. And we are on a fact finding mission already trying to find documents in their files that were supposed to have been posted. So we are working to clean up that mess. In order to address your concern about the general fund, that already occurred. That actually occurred several years ago. Mr. Rule did that. It has only been documented as a separate fund in name. It has not actually been a committed fund for a very long time. With that in mind, this resolution binds those funds in that in that manner as council is acknowledging our intention to use them for drainage.
And I have one quick comment.
Yes.
So in the financial provisions in the local government code, I'm not an accountant or anything. I will be the first to say that finance people confuse me all the time. But the the rule in the finance provisions indicates that any revenue such as lost revenue from whatever source derived must go into the general fund. So this is actually tracking with following the finance provisions in the local government code.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Does that explain that concern? Because these were claimed as lost revenue.
Well, it helps to explain what this resolution was. But just one rebuttal, there there is a great deal that hasn't been done. That was not Mr. Rule's fault.
So we were talking about this resolution.
So I just wanted to clarify. Then I'll, okay.
All right, so anything else about this topic? No? All right, so we'll take a vote. If you are in support of passing this resolution, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes, no nays. The resolution will pass at this point in time. Thank you all. All right, item number eleven. Council will convene an executive session to discuss personnel matters under Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven four and receive advice from legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five five one dot zero seven one related to same. So at this point in time, we are going to move into executive session. The time is eight oh eight.
Will you be back?
You, you have to come back.
Yeah, we have to come back.
Well, yeah, you don't have to come back.
You can come back for more of the meetings that I missed.
Yes, ma'am. The meeting is not over.
Okay, how much time do you estimate?
There's no telling. We don't limit it. You pause, I know. I believe you paused the recording. You definitely paused like the audio. Sometimes the video will stop. You, we, so as a reminder, you just question? All right, we have concluded our executive session and we are going to be moving into deliberation on the item. I will introduce it. Apologies, I shuffled my paperwork. All right, so item number eleven, discussion and possible action to authorize the mayor to negotiate the terms and conditions of an employment agreement with a selected candidate from the city administrative selection process, execute the agreement subject to legal review, and upon successful execution, appoint the individual as a city administrator for the City of Wood Creek.
Chair Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize the mayor to negotiate the terms and conditions of an employment agreement with Jim Burton for the city administrators, from the city administrator selection process, execute the agreement subject to legal review, and upon successful execution, appoint Jim Burton as the city administrator for the City of Wood Creek.
I second.
All right, Councilmember Bailey is the second. So we will enter into discussion about appointing Jim Burton as the city administrator following that process of contract negotiation and execution. Do we have any questions or commentary on the matter?
I have a question about some of the process. How many applicants did apply for this?
So we had about twelve initial applications that we reviewed to create a first selection cut. From there, the members of the administrative team reviewing applications all independently submitted their recommendations for interview. So the cut wasn't done together, but we overlapped significantly. I think only a couple candidates were added by me, actually. And then from there, we went on to interview six people. From there, we selected essentially a top two to three candidates to discuss directly among ourselves. And then from there, we brought a recommendation of Jim Burton to you all for consideration.
And if you could remind us of who that panel was?
Mr. Mike Bayes, our current city administrator consultant, who is assisting in the city during this transition period. Mayor Rasko and myself, Mayor Burton. I'll speak a little bit. We had some, we had some strong applicants. It was really nice considering that we had less strong applicants the last time we went up to this position. So it was actually a very thorough process. We had a lot to consider. Several of the applicants had city secretary experience, not necessarily city administrator experience. Several of them had departmental experience, not city administrative experience. Ultimately, one of the defining factors on Mr. Burton's behalf was that he is a good fit personality wise for us. He has established relationships that are beneficial to our community. It is a bit of an in-house promotion, which is not uncommon for organizations to sort of promote from within. He was a strong applicant with everyone else. And we have sort of considered any of his weaknesses and have clear and very doable things we can do to facilitate him gaining the experience that maybe he lacked over other people in that specific area of city administration. So. Do we have any further questions or comments? All right, then we can go ahead and vote on this motion to authorize Mayor Rasko to enter into an executive agreement subject to legal review and execute that agreement and appoint Jim Burton, should that process come to completion in a positive manner.
Sure.
We'll go ahead and take a hand raising vote. If you're in support, lift your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes, no nays, heard. Motion passes. Mr. Burton will officially be considered for position and a contract will proceed with him. Thank you to all the other applicants. I understand a few of y'all have stayed on the meeting with us. And we do encourage you to consider applying for another open position coming up in the city. And so.
We can actually say.
Yes, the city secretary position is open now and will be posted. And we were really impressed. Everybody put in a great interview and it was a difficult difficult deliberation. So thank you all. At this point in time, we have no more regular agenda items. This is the point in the meeting where we would go into council considerations for a future agenda. I would like to remind everyone that we are in a process of considering not holding second meetings. However, if you all present items, that kind of creates a preface to go ahead and move forward with planning a second meeting. And I did hear this council member Bailey's concerns over financial documents. So that could, I would recommend that as an item myself. So. Do we have any other items to be recommended for the second council meeting for October?
Yes.
Did I miss something?
Well, there was a two, twelve and thirteen on here.
But above that is a wrap.
Sorry.
I would like to bring an item to explore program ideas to assist our over sixty five year age population. We have a old age dependency ratio in Wood Creek of seventy two and compared to the state of twenty. So I would like to consider I will research and bring to the council ride sharing grandma, grandchildren, golf cart rides, whatever kind of ideas.
About to be done.
So.
I'll keep on my finger.
Yeah. So that also I will report on infrastructure and mobility power.
Okay.
And my third item, but you kind of mentioned it. I hope we have a statement about, I hope we have a financial statement by then.
Okay.
I will be reporting on planning the second meeting.
Is that all? But you said, no, I'm okay.
Well, I'm going to speak for you. Oh, wait, that tree event isn't.
Yeah, you make sure you.
That's government.
That's the next portion of the meeting.
I'm just excited about the tree.
To add to council considerations for our next October second meeting. Sounds like we will be having a meeting, so.
Oh, wait, this is for the second. I was referring to the next meeting. I was calling for.
We typically do reports in the second meeting of the month anyway, so it sounds like we have two to make. Likely a financial report is coming forward. And then I'll make it important for more. Okay, so a tree board. That's really important because one of the things we we have been asking is like, hey, are there even reports? Because we might have a meeting to have reports. But if there's not even reports either, then that's a problem.
I'd like to add. Hello? If I may, if I may add something just for consideration in the next meeting is since Councilmember Hambrik isn't here to bring it forward, I do know that Parks and Rec has a list of of items that they would like to move forward on that is coming from, they've got a couple items that need to come before the council that they voted on.
Thank you.
So we're having a second October meeting.
It's on break. Yeah. All right, we'll move into the announcement portion of the meeting. This first announcement, item twelve, is incredibly important. I hope people are still listening or tune back on eventually for this. There's a town hall for citywide drainage issued scheduled for October twenty second at six thirty P M at the DFW with city engineer Freeland Turk in attendance and leading the meeting. Item number thirteen, an update on Deerfield. A projected timeline has been received from the project management team. We are waiting for an updated design plan. And then we'll move forward with scheduling a town hall meeting to discuss the north-south work with residents and property owners in that area. And then I believe one more announcement. Arbor Day retreat or our tree giveaway, tree giveaway.
That's going to be in November, on November ninth, on Saturday. I encourage anybody that's interested in signing up for one of our free trees that we're giving away. We have twenty five different trees and it's first come, first served, limited to one per household. And we are just really excited to get some of our neighbors out here, learn about proper tree planting, watering, everything to keep that beautifully allowing. And we're going to have coffee and donuts for everybody. And it's going to be a good time. It'll be from nine to eleven in the morning on Saturday.
And location?
At Augusta Park.
Ooh, cool.
Great location for it.
Yes.
All right, hearing.
I like tree planters.
That was a solid point, right? Hearing no further announcements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you. And all those colleagues and.